Suze, are you good? All right. Welcome, everyone, to the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four. City Council meeting. Suze, would you do roll call for us, please?
Yes, Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Gear.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
President accounted for.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember Smith.
Yep.
Thank you.
Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. Before that, I'd just like to make an announcement for some of you that may be in the audience. For items seven A and eight A, we will understand that there are probably people here signed up to give testimony. And item seven A, we will not be taking public hearing as this will be a conversation with the council. And and then item eight A, this is initial posting, and the public hearing for that item will be on September fifth. So we'll be taking public comment during the public hearing on item eight A if it were, if it is to move forward. So I hope that's helpful for everyone. Because we don't want to waste your time. Okay. Item three A is presentation on telecommunications from our city attorney presenter attorney Feldman. And he will be with us online.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
By by way of introduction, Ken Feldman is nationally prominent in the area of telecommunications. He served as the president of the Citizens Committee for the FCC. My mic working. There we go.
You got to get.
So he's a.
Thank you.
There we go. He's very well known to all the telecommunications providers. He's, I would say, respected, but not. There's a lot, a lot of affection. Because he's, he knows it as well as they do.
Thank you. Do we have Mr. Feldman with us, Eric? You're with us, everyone, and please.
I I don't see him as of yet.
All right, let's go to. Apologies, he says he needs a link to sign in. If can someone send him, give Jeff a link so he can get that to Mr. Feldman so he can sign in? Please.
Be forwarded to me, I'll send it to him.
Excuse us just a moment, folks.
Okay, Erin's doing it, Betsy.
Thank you. Let's take item three B while we wait for Mr. Feldman to join us.
We just need Erin.
We just need Erin for that, too.
We could do the consent calendar.
Let's do that. We'll go to item four additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Suze, do we have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Item. This is fun. Item five is the consent calendar. Item A is approval of the July twenty twenty four statement of expenditures and authorize the mayor to sign warrants in payment thereof. And counsel, any questions for staff on this? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the July twenty twenty four statement of expenditures and authorize the mayor to sign warrants in payment thereof.
I will second that, but I do have a question for the city manager. How often do we post this particular report? Is it monthly or bimonthly?
Monthly.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Suzanne?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Are we ready for item three B yet? Thank you.
All right, here we go.
Sales tax update, June twenty twenty four, from our city manager.
All right, it's fun to be able to go at the beginning of the meeting here.
People are awake.
Let's see, am I up there? Eric, can you put me on the? There we go. All right, so we have the sales tax update for June twenty twenty four for the sales tax collections we received in July. So year to date, we are up two point. Sorry to minimize this, up two point four percent. Uh, we have total collection so far this year of three million nine hundred ninety-two thousand, uh, which is ninety-two thousand more than it was the previous year. For the month, we were up two point seven percent, which was a twenty-two thousand dollar increase over two thousand twenty-three. For lodging tax, we did see this kind of stabilize a little bit. So for the month of June, we were only down four point five percent, which was much, much closer than we have been the rest of the year, and we're down ten point four percent year to date. And if you can see on the, the chart there, oh, I've, I changed it back. It's not the Dolphins color. I apologize. I, uh, I don't know how that happened. Uh, but you can see that we are, uh, except for the month of March, we are still trending up pretty much exactly in line, uh, every month for the year. Any questions?
Counsel questions for Erin.
All right, that's all I have for you on that one.
Do we have Mr. Feldman now? Welcome, Mr. Feldman.
We do, thank you. Good evening. Sorry for the little delay there while I was trying to get the link. I'm not sure if there's been an introduction yet, uh, Madam Mayor, or if you just want me to dive into the topics that were in my memo, or where should we start?
Well, Jeff has done great accolades about your experience and the respect that you have in your area of expertise. He's bragged on you a lot before you joined us. So if you'd like to just start with your presentation and what you'd like to share with us, you may go right ahead.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. And, uh, it, it's nice to be here, uh, with you. Uh, by way of background, and, and I, I just, I want to share this because I think it may help a little bit. If you have an, uh, an understanding of the foundation from, uh, where my advice comes from. I have spent the better part of my, uh, career in local government. I've been practicing law for forty-three years, forty-one of which, forty, maybe forty to forty-one of which I have been a local government attorney. And most of that time, i- it has been involved in telecommunications uh, of a variety of different types and now broadband issues. Uh, I'm also a, uh, local government, um, volunteer, if you will. I was a planning commissioner, a city council member, and a mayor for about twenty years, all told, and, um, I have sat on your side of the dais, and I, I so appreciate what you do for your community. Uh, I, I would tell you, given that background, that with the possible exception of Jeff Wilson, um, no one gets more upset than I do when the federal government or the state government tells local government what we can't do. And that puts me in a very uncomfortable position, and this is not the first time of, uh, speaking to my municipal colleagues and explaining how restrictive and preemptive the law is on an area or in an area that is of significant concern to, uh, you and the citizens that you represent. The, um, the statute that, uh, restricts us is called the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. And when it was passed by Congress that year, um, it was the first significant updating, uh, in a major kind of comprehensive way, not just one topic at a time, of the nineteen thirty-four Communications Act. Um, at the time, there was a lot of talk about it's been sixty years, and we haven't updated the thirty-four act. Some of us who are involved in those debates and lobbying at the time are now looking back and saying, that's not quite so new anymore, and a lot's changed since nineteen ninety-six. And here we are again lamenting the fact that Congress has not updated the law in, in any significant, uh, comprehensive fashion. Uh, so we, um, we are dealing with a provision in the Wireless Chapter of the Communications Act. And it, there was a huge battle back in ninety-six. And the, the fight from the local government side, and it was National League of Cities and many U.S. Conference of Mayors, uh, many other local government organizations that tried to preserve local authority, that lobbied to, um, you know, these are land use issues. And, and back at the time in ninety-six, they, the phone company had just been broken up, uh, a few years back, and now they were going to be providing all this spectrum to wireless companies, and we're going to have competition. They were talking about thousands and thousands of cell towers that were going to be needed all across the country. So local zoning was a huge issue. And the compromise that ended up in that bill preserved local zoning authority with, um, a few, a handful of exceptions. And some of those exceptions were sort of process kind of exceptions, which said, when we get an application, we have to act within a reasonable period of time. And that if we're going to deny an application, we have to deny it in writing stating what the evidence is that supports the denial. But probably one of the more substantive preemptions or restrictions of, of that preservation of local authority was that it said, uh, no local or state government can regulate based upon the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. And uh, the environmental effects language has been interpreted by federal courts to include health effects. So what has happened over the years and through a few FCC proceedings, and some informal, um, advisories that have gone back and forth is we've landed in a spot where it's legitimate for a local government in its regulations to require that an applicant demonstrate that its facility will be in compliance with the federal standards for radio frequency emissions. It is not appropriate to demand that they do more than that. Now, what are those federal standards? First of all, they haven't been significantly upgraded in over twenty years. And, uh, I am not a, uh, an engineer, and I am not an epidemiologist, but my involvement in this issue has caused me to spend a considerable amount of time with people who are. And the way it's been explained to me is that the standards measure, um, the impact of the heat of the radio frequency emission. So depending upon how close you are to a site and how hot that makes your skin, and at what point does that become dangerous? Um, that is what the, um, current regulations cover. What they don't cover are any things that are not necessarily heat-related, like, do these emissions have any impact on cell structure? Does that differ between whether the human being it's impacting is a child or an adult? Um, if it does have an impact, could it be a positive impact, or an, or is it a negative impact? Or is there some level where it's okay, but at some other level, it is no longer okay? And there was an effort to get the FCC to up, well, there's been multiple efforts to ask the FCC to update its, uh, health standards for RF emissions over the last fifteen years. Um, and, and there's a lot of detail, I could go on for a long time, but suffice it to say, it hasn't done it. So we're stuck with these old rules, and many people believe that the old rules are not protective of public health and safety. There are others who believe that they are protective of public health and safety. There are, um, a- and, and there are e- even more that are kind of in this middle group that say, well, some things, you know, clearly could be problematic, and others are probably fine. For example, um, you know, we all have devices like this. Um, I try, based upon what I've learned, not to spend four hours a day like this. Because this is pretty close to my brain right here, um, which Jeff will tell you is sometimes challenging enough without having to deal with the impact of RF emissions. The, but nobody knows really what, where the, where the line is. The, um, it needs more study. And it's not getting, in my opinion, sufficient study. Um, but we are stuck. And, um, a- and I will tell you, there have been numerous times, especially over the last five years, when uh, small cells have become more prevalent, and so you start to see more of these antennas lower to the ground. Um, where people are concerned, is, is this going to damage my health? There's some people actually believe this absolutely is going to, uh, damage my health. Um, based upon the, the people that I've talked to and studied with and what I've read, um, I'm fairly confident that unless you are extremely close, and I mean, you know, within ten or fifteen feet of one of these facilities and at the, kind of the same height level as the antenna, you probably don't have a serious, uh, problem. Even a small cell pole in front of someone's home, um, if it's right in front of someone's bedroom window where they have a teenager who's sitting in there for four hours a day gaming, um, so there's a signal coming in at that level. That would concern me more than if it was on the corner of the lot or within ten feet of the lot line and not directly pointing at the window. If someone walking on the street with a baby carriage that's on their phone is maybe connecting to that antenna, but only as they walk towards it, and then as they walk away from it, and then they're gone, and that time period of exposure, at least from what I've learned, is not problematic. But I am not here to tell you what is safe and what is not safe. I, I'm here to explain, there's a, there's a debate, a real debate over this today. And both the federal courts and the FCC have indicated that this is not something that we are allowed to regulate and, um, and that I, at least my legal opinion is, which we often share our legal opinions, uh, in confidential, um, uh, either in executive sessions or in confidential memoranda, but I'm, I'm very comfortable saying this publicly, and I've said it in public, uh, in other places. Um, if you go beyond what the limited things that federal law allows you to do, uh, you are subject to challenge, and you are likely, uh, to be overturned. Now, that being said, uh, you may hear from people that, well, there is, here's a handful of cities that have done it differently, and they require this, and they require that. And in fact, there are a handful of cities, uh, around the country that have more restrictive, uh, requirements. And every time that has come up in the work that I've done, we usually try to check what are those requirements? And we try to call those communities and say, how are your provisions working? Um, are they being enforced if you have them? And what we usually find out is that sometimes the communities that adopt these very restrictive provisions are, um, uh, very low population, uh, very rural, and when the industry realizes uh, they don't even want to fight about it. They're like, we'll go somewhere else. We're not going to serve that area. Um, in, in other cases, and, and this has happened multiple times with us. We've talked to city attorneys and county attorneys, and they've said, yeah, but you know, we put a provision in our code that says, uh, the planning director has the authority if, if he or she thinks that any of our regulations would violate state or federal law to waive them. Um, so, and that whenever these things come out, we, so we never enforce uh, this one provision or that provision. We put it in to appease the citizens, but we really never enforce it. Um, a- a- and you know, some people think that's a good practice. I don't, I don't practice law that way. I, I never like to, um, advise, uh, a community to take a politically expedient way out and kind of wink, wink, we know this is never really going to get enforced. Um, we try to act within the bounds, um, of the law. There are some communities that have maybe just stepped over the line a little bit, but not gone too far in that they, uh, may be a little bit more strict than the FCC as to what kind of evidence a, a, a provider would have to provide to demonstrate that they're in compliance with the regulations. And sometimes they get challenged, and sometimes they don't, because the applicant may feel like, you know, it's not worth it, it's not going to be a big deal. Um, so there's, there's a bunch of them that are in the gray area, and uh, depending upon what you eventually want to do with how you, uh, regulate these things. You know, we can talk, uh, about strategy for how to do that, but some of the things I mentioned that were primarily intended to deal with the statistics also secondarily would deal with potential health concerns, and that's where you cite these on a lot. If some, if a company wants to cite one of these, and you see these a lot in the metro area today where the population is pretty dense, they're go, they are going into residential neighborhoods. So you have a, an R-one zoning district with, um, thirty homes, um, uh, per acre, and they've got, um, a street light, two or three streetlights on every street, and they want to take down a street light and replace it with a big fat pole that's thirty-five feet in the air that has small cell facilities. Well, in addition to wanting to minimize the look of it, a lot of cities have adopted requirements that you have to be within ten feet or fifteen feet of the lot line. And you can only have one, uh, per block in a residential neighborhood unless you can demonstrate that there's no way you can make your system work unless you have more than one, because there's something else in the federal law that says, even when you're allowed to regulate, if your regulations have the effect of, um, inhibiting these companies, the ability to provide their services, the regulations can be preempted on, uh, on a case-by-case basis, based upon the facts of that particular sites, site, rather. So it's okay to have spacing requirements. It's okay to talk about war on the lot. It gets located. It's okay to have design requirements to minimize the look and to not have a bunch of ugly things hanging off the side of the pole. Um, but when it, when it comes to, uh, radio frequency emissions, you really have to be cautious and and stand back. And one other example I'll give you is, we, we had a community in Colorado not too long ago where, um, uh, one of the, uh, concerned citizens, um, I made, made the argument that, well, if you can't prohibit it, and if you can't force them to, you know, every six months, do a study to prove that they're in compliance with the federal standards, even though we don't like the federal standards, um, can you at least require larger setbacks from vulnerable communities? So you might have a certain setback for a poll from a residence or a business, but if it's, if it's for a school or a nursing home or some other facility like that, can we have larger setbacks? Well, my, my response to them is, what's the policy reason behind doing that? What would that serve? Well, it's to protect those, right? It, it's, there you have a, a health impact, right? We're trying to protect the health of this particular, what someone thinks is a more vulnerable community. That's exactly the kind of thing that the federal law says we cannot do. So, um, I hate being in this position, I really do, of being able to talk to my municipal colleagues and say, the law doesn't let us do that, because I have tried really hard my entire career to try to figure out how to help my clients make things work the way they want to make it work. But this is one of those areas that, uh, is the exception, and we are just really, really constrained. So I guess with that, I'll, I'll, um, zip it and see what kind of questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Um, counsel, I'm going to look to you all for questions for him, but then I want the audience to know that if you all, any of you have questions for Mr. Feldman, we'd like to offer you the opportunity to speak to him so that you all can satisfy your inquiries as well as the counsel. But I'm going to start with the counsel. Counsel, you have any questions for Mr. Feldman? No?
I, I would just like to thank you, Ken, for, uh, walking through that. And I, and I have your letter here, and I've gone over that a couple of times, so thank you very much.
Welcome.
Does anyone in the audience have questions for Mr. Feldman or would like to talk with him while he's on? Yes, sir, please, if you'll come to the podium? And just give him your name and your town of residence, please.
Yes, Ken, this is Brian. My address is Woodland Park.
And if you would speak in, directly into the microphone so he can hear you well.
Yes. Since I believe the council's first and foremost duty is to protect the health and well-being of the county, of the, the members of this community. Um, since that's off the table, which seems really odd, um, I do have a couple of questions at first. Does the five G spectrum of technology, is it approaching microwave transmissions?
It's a little more complicated than that, but the answer is yes and no. And the reason I say that is
That's, that's fine, so.
Well, there are different kinds of five G depending upon where a company has their licensed spectrum. There are, there is much of five G. In fact, I would think most of the five G in the United States today is in the mid-band spectrum. That is not approaching the, uh, microwave. The higher band five G, um, is where the, the waves are much closer together. It has a shorter, um, uh, distance it can go, and, and that is potentially, um, a different, and according to some people, more dangerous impact.
Okay. If there were two towers, is a certain window of the equipment that's talking to another tower? If it's transmitting data a lot quicker and at a larger volume, is it communicating in higher power versus the spectrum or the, the pointing down to take care of our small handhelds?
So. I don't, yeah. I, you, your question is outside the area of my expertise, and it's not even one that I've heard other folks talking about, so I, I couldn't even tell you what I've heard from others. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, twenty-eight years, if the FCC doesn't want to update their information or their um, safety rulings for twenty-eight years in technology, that's that's a century. And that's a long time. The FCC not only requires one safety latch on microwave ovens, they require two. So are, is this equipment that we're dealing with like a microwave oven without a door on? And
Yeah, that, that I can tell you from the, the folks that I have, uh, spoken to, engineers that see you. Uh, no, it's, it is not equivalent to standing in front of your microwave without a door on it.
Um, I happen to have a, this is an iPhone seven. Um, it was, you know, uh, put out seven, eight years ago. It only goes up to LTE network. I can stream, so therefore in the community that Bluebird Hill, I can stream concerts. I can watch the latest movies off of LTE. For that technology not to be used versus the five G, why do we need a tower in town which is less than a football field away here? If the technology hasn't changed. So obviously, this, the five G or whatever this is has changed. It needs to be close. Yeah, so I I'd like to address the fact that what you were saying, that we were stuck.
Yeah, well.
That FCC and the municipal corporations are indeed corporations. In the commercial, the Colorado revised statutes, there's a definition for mayor, for governor. In there, it says de facto or de jure. The FCC can only be de facto. That's, that's a, that's a corporate term. Means that it exists on paper. Um, the de jure part is this council gets its power from the rights of the people, the de jure aspect. That's something that the FCC cannot operate in the de jure jurisdiction. So has the jurisdictions ever been challenged with regards to the FCC? Because.
Yes. Yeah. The FCC jurisdiction has been challenged multiple times, and I am not aware of any federal court, including in the District of, uh, in the Tenth Circuit, which governs Colorado, that have, um, determined that the FCC does not have jurisdiction to adopt regulations such as this.
Um, does the FCC have any, any elected officials in it?
Um, no, they, no. It, it's a federal agent, it's a federal agency. Um, so the president, uh, makes nominations and the Senate confirms.
Yeah. Unlike. Unlike the de jour, unlike our empowering the council with our vote. So, so so the council gets its power from the, from the governed, which is us, we empower the council. The FCC is a corporation. Unless we have a contract with the FCC, we can overrule them in the de jour manner that we stand, if we stand on that. So so recently the, the Chevron doctrine was questioned with the Supreme Court. And that was with council members handing over the right to these alphabet regulation companies. And the Supreme Court, no, not to, to Congress, you cannot hand off your duties to the the
Sir, have you, you have a question in this for him? Otherwise I'd like to see if there's any other folks.
That you can be empowered if you chose to be in the de jour manner that the people provide you. In the corporate manner, no, you'll, you'll get as, as this gentleman is showing that he is stuck because he's going after the, the corporate side of things. And obviously the FCC is a bigger, bigger corporation. But there's one aspect, a huge aspect is the jurisdiction that you have by being a de jour elected party.
Okay. Do you have further questions for Mr. Feldman?
No, I guess we're just going to roll over and let the FCC. One more thought is some of us were old enough to remember that asbestos was told by the government that it's okay, that cigarette smoking was okay, that dumping glyphosate or roundup on our food, if we consume it, it's okay. Years later, we find out that, no, it's not okay. So this, this topic right here, these possible or approaching microwave technology that's, you know, within a couple hundred feet of us or less than, is that going to be the next, oh, we're sorry, we were wrong. It's actually a slow boiling, just like asbestos or cigarettes.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Yes. If you would just give Mr. Feldman your name and residence city, please.
Hello, Eric Lockman, Woodland Park. Mr. Feldman, thank you for coming. I have a couple of questions. One is my concern is not really with acute dangers like you're talking about with heat, but more chronic dangers. Do you, and I, and I respect that you're not an engineer or an epidemiologist, but you've spent time with them. And so have you heard of any studies that, that show possibilities of chronic damage from telecommunications towers?
Um, I haven't, but I will share with you what a, a professor at the CU School of Engineering shared with me. And this is a gentleman who is, has spent time early in his career as the chief technology officer at the FCC years ago and is probably one of the more respected radio frequency engineers and maybe even in the world. What he said is if you make the analogy to vigorous exercise, there's a reason that we don't work out seven days a week. Because when we have a vigorous workout, we're actually damaging the cells in our muscles. They break down as a result of the exercise. But then when they heal, they heal stronger and you grow muscle mass. So that on a limited periodic basis, exposing ourselves, if you will, to vigorous exercise is actually good for us. And he, he said, some of the studies that have been conducted to date demonstrate that something like that might be the case. There are impacts on cell structure that long-term, not short-term, but long-term exposure to radio frequency emissions can cause. But whether they're even beneficial for you up to a point and then they become detrimental to you, we don't know. And there have not been enough studies and there need to be more. And the one other thing I will add that he and one of his colleagues told me was that there have been some studies showing that long-term exposure in very young children. And, and I'm not talking about, you know, an hour a day. I'm talking about constant, long-term exposure over the majority of a day can cause more permanent changes that are probably not good. But again, more study is, is required and ought to be happening.
Okay. And I appreciate that in reality, there are maybe sensitive populations or people that are more at risk. We just had an ordinance passed here and I believe you were part of it. Can you explain how what, what mechanisms do we have to, to help restrict these types of towers? And is it setbacks? Is it something else? And can you walk me through what, what types of things we can do that may not mention sensitive populations, but would be more broad that we could use to, to mitigate?
Yeah, I, I'm afraid I can't answer that because I was not involved in the development and passage of that ordinance. So I'm really not familiar with anything that's in there.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Feldman, thank you for your time today, this evening, I should say.
Uh, my pleasure. And if you have, I mean, goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway. The council has follow-up questions, if there are things you want to, us to look at in your ordinance and you know, to provide you some more information. Jeff probably told you that we're, we, we've been colleagues for many, many years, but we've been working together in the same law firm just since January of this year. So it's, we have great synergies in being able to provide these kind of ongoing services to our municipal clients. And if we can help on these issues, help you navigate these issues going forward, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have anything else for Mr. Feldman? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. Thank you. This takes us to item six, public comments on items not on the agenda this evening. Suzanne?
Yes, ma'am. This one I'm not clear on. It's Trina. Is, is Trina Hoffling in the audience? Is Trina online? Okay, Trina's online and she has, that she wants to talk about the IGA, but also an item not on the agenda. So Trina, if you can speak about your item not on the agenda, this would be the time.
Trina, if you would share your name, your full name and your city of residence, please.
Actually, it is about the IGA, so it's not appropriate for me to speak tonight, but thanks for asking.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay, the next person signed up is Don DeZellum. There is Don, there he is.
Don, if, when you get to the podium, if you'd state your name and city of residence, please.
Hi, Don DeZellum, Woodland Park. Thank you, Mayor and Council and staff. I want to thank you for the work being done on Lake Street. It's going to be a great improvement when it's done, but there are some issues. The first one being that Chapter eight point oh four of the city charter regards garbage. We have one trash hauler now in Teller County and they are not going to pick up our garbage until Lake Street is completed. We cannot store our trash for several weeks in our garages because that is against the ordinance. So my landlord is disabled as a walker and their solution was for him to drag his trash can to the nearest cross street and put it out. One, there is no access to draggy trash can that far. And two, using a walker, it's impossible for him to do so. I could do it for him, but like I said, there is no access to get it over there. There is a huge ditch in between us and Maple Street, which would be our place to put it. Also just pointing out the fact that along Lake Street, there are many blocks that contain six, seven, eight houses and the nearest cross street might be a little hard to drag a trash can down what's left of Lake to a point where they can deposit their trash for pickup. So I'm just asking that maybe this city staff or somebody could speak with the local monopoly on trash about how we can avoid this violation of the city ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have that, Erin?
Yeah, Erin, you got that?
Thank you, Don. Next.
Ms. Gail Garrick, you did not put what you want to speak on, so I'm not clear. If you want to, where? Yeah, okay. And Nicole, you have either six or eight A, so I don't know. Is it an item not on the agenda?
Item, item seven A and eight A, there will, will only be a vote on eight A to set the public hearing, which will be on September fifth. So that would be the only vote that would occur. Are those the two items that you're speaking about? No, ma'am, we'll take public comment at the public hearing. That's what the public hearing is for. No, ma'am. Thank you.
And then Amanda Lockman, same question. Okay, thank you.
That's all? Anyone in the audience? Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council for items not on the agenda? All right, thank you. All right, that takes us on to item seven A, discussion of the amended one point zero nine percent sales tax IGA with the Woodland Park School District. And Erin, that's you.
There we go. On our July eighteenth meeting, the council gave direction for staff to begin negotiations on looking at a new IGA with the school district regarding the accounting and understandability of the one point oh nine percent sales tax. So on August seventh, we had a meeting. It was myself, Mayor Case, Councilmember Harvey and our attorney Jeff. And then from the school district, we had President Bates, Vice President Kimbrel, Superintendent Witt. And from Merritt Academy, as some technical support and expertise, we had the CFO, Talley. All right. So a little bit of a meeting recap. We met to discuss, as I said, the accounting and reporting requirements for the one point oh nine percent sales tax. We were looking to achieve accountability and understandability. And from that meeting on the eighteenth of July, council requested for accounting for the funds in a similar method to our four-ten fund or how a grant would be tracked and recorded, which is a very similar methodology. And council also requested for monthly reporting that would be posted on the district's website. So those were the goals that we were set for as part of this meeting negotiations. As part of the meeting, we did discuss a two-phase approach to accommodate the school district hiring and training a new CFO. We, we didn't want to make that be the ultimate barrier so that we couldn't move forward because of the timing. So we said, okay, let's discuss how can we possibly get to what it is the council is looking for? So we had a two-phase approach where phase one would be the present through the end of their fiscal, their fiscal year, which would be June thirty of two thousand twenty-five or earlier, if the school district was able to implement their new financial system prior to that. And then we had phase two, starting at the latest on July first, two thousand twenty-five, and that would continue onward. So phase one, what did we actually discuss? So we discussed having grant accounting for the school district for all the sales tax revenues and expenditures for the one point oh nine percent. And they would be set up using a four-digit designated grant fund in the district's financial ERP system for revenues and expenditures, with the exception of payroll. And the reason that the payroll was excluded for this first phase is because of the heavy lift that it would take to actually get this implemented. It would require touching every single employee for the district that this would apply to. And they would have to be touched every single time there was a change. So we felt that would be a hurdle to implement it right away. So that's why we had that discussion. If anyone, again, if Councilmember Harvey or the mayor have anything to add, please, please do interject. The district would then produce a summarized report of the expenditures by category with the detailed ledger for each category. And the payroll expenditures, the district would provide the total expenditures incurred. And then we show a transfer or some other methodology to show the amount allocated for that one point oh nine percent sales tax. If requested, the district could then provide a complete payroll register, but it's understood that there would be no delineation in that payroll register to reflect that four-digit grant code that we had discussed. Any questions on that? Real, real simple and clean, right? Accounting is fun. All right. Then we have quarterly reporting. The district would begin producing a quarterly report reflecting the change to grant accounting for the one point oh nine percent sales tax for Q1, two thousand twenty-five. The quarterly reporting would be available on the district's website. Okay. So then for phase two, so phase two would be a little bit different than phase one. It would be the one point oh nine percent sales tax revenues and expenditure would be set up using that four-digit designated grant project in the ERP system for all the revenues and expenditures now, including the payroll information. We figured this would give enough time to make this accommodation for the change. And the district would then produce a summarized report of the expenditures by category with the detailed ledger for all the categories. And then the monthly reporting would then switch to monthly. So the district will begin producing monthly reporting reflecting the change to grant accounting for the one point oh nine percent beginning on July first, two thousand twenty-five, which is the beginning of their fiscal year. And the monthly reporting would be available on the district website. So that was kind of the, the direction of the meeting and what was discussed. It was a very collaborative meeting. I felt like all parties came to the table ready to discuss these issues and, and try to work out, work out something to move forward. And then as a follow-up, one thing we did have is after the meeting, the school district was requesting for the quarterly reporting to begin in January of two thousand twenty-five instead of immediately for July two thousand twenty-four with the earlier implementation contingent upon how quickly the new CFO is able to implement the changes. So it was something that was emailed to us after. And that's, that's all I have for you. I'll turn it over to the mayor and Councilmember Harvey for
Thank you. This was after quite a healthy discussion and the input from Ms. Tally, who is a CFO for the school, the Merritt Academy, previously worked at the school district. She has the knowledge and experience of how the ledger systems work for the school district, which are quite complex and have account numbers that are twice, if not more, longer than our account numbers. And, and it, as I've said before, it is mandated by the state that all schools use that method of accounting. And they are also implementing a new accounting system, software. But, and we, we, Carol and I and the manager, in our discussions with them that day, we felt like this was a, a fair plan to phase in proper accounting and reporting and transparency, not only for the council, but for the public. And so I would suggest, and I don't, I do not profess to read anyone's mind, but I believe that if the, if the school were, school board were to agree with these terms, that we might be able to put this to bed and move forward with school business and city business. That's just my thoughts. And so I'll open this up for Carol. And then I'd like to hear from the board.
Quickly, because I would like to hear from President Bates and my, my other takeaway from the, the meeting, which I thought was collaborative and professional, and I thank Ms. Tally for her input. I saw this mind melding between her and Erin, the green visors come out, so. But unfortunately, Ms. Tally Uh, but unfortunately, Ms. Tally, uh, doesn't directly represent the district. She represents the charter school that's now under the authority of the district. Um, I, one of my takeaways though was that if possible, that, um. The, uh, monthly reporting would start sooner than July 2025. Uh, and I don't think that that's an unreasonable request. And, um. My takeaway also from that meeting is that our city attorney would prepare, um, an amendment to the IGA that was signed earlier this year. Um, and that that would then, uh, be sent back to the district for their consideration. Uh, but that will require the consensus of the council for that direction to our attorney. And at this point, I would, I would like to hear, uh, Mr. Bates', uh, recount of the, the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Would you all like to come up and, and discuss with the council, please?
I'm, I'm just here for support.
All right.
Questions. I'm happy to join you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, that, that's very close to what we discussed. I mean. There were considerations for the fact that. We've got a new CFO coming on that we're very excited about. His credentials are strong. Uh, but he'll come on the 19th of this month. And then. We'll go right into an audit in September. And we just asked for the grace to be able to do our first reporting. In early 2025, so we will have, excuse me. In December, we'll have the results of our audit. And then they'll be compiled and, and by February 15th. We would have the ability to provide a, a report that will also give our CFO time to get his feet wet. I mean, he's coming in nude to a very busy. A brand new school year and a couple of months of catching up to get us back on track. So, uh. As the city manager mentioned, you know, if we could start this reporting. First quarter of 25 versus. Uh, counting for July through September now, I, I think that's a bridge too far for our CFO. We're excited about it. We don't want to run him off in the first month he's there. But, uh, but that, the way. Uh, the city manager explained it, uh, is a very good recap of our meeting. Uh, and I too thought it was a very cordial meeting. All parties involved were open-minded and listened to one another. And if we can do something like that, we're very much. Uh, about doing, you know, doing the very thing we just discussed. We are open to that extra layer of accounting. But we've got to get used to that. We've got to allow our CFO to come in there, get set up to be able to provide what all parties are asking for. So. If, if we could begin this reporting in, in. First quarter of 2025, that will give us time to get this done appropriately. Uh, as far as quarterly or monthly reporting. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, when we had that meeting, we talked about quarterly reporting initially. And see what all parties thought of quarterly reporting. And then decide if this is something that needed to become a monthly effort. But the only thing I would, I would, uh. Remind all parties to is this started out as an annual reporting. And we have conceded the fact that, that the community would like to see more. So I feel like the quarterly reporting is, is it four times what we, what we had. I would like to start it out as that. And all of us work together like we have been in this meeting and other meetings. To, uh, work together and, and, I mean, our, all of our objective is to come up with something that satisfies all parties. And I think we're on track to do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, certainly.
So just to be clear to, to everybody, the information that is being sought for transparency is presently available through the district. What is going to take some time to implement will be taking and creating those individual grant codes. So that it's really a standalone reporting entity that we're looking at for the city sales tax. So as far as, you know, the, the desire, if there is to see a payroll register, if that's, you know, the, the desire to make sure that payroll is being. Um, paid appropriately to the different categories of individuals. That is something that is available now. It is just not carved out to the sales tax piece. And so I just want to make sure people know that, that the transparency is. Available. It's just not to the level of taking it to a single grant specific. That, that the city and, and the, um, some of the members of the community are hoping for. So that is the piece that we're looking for some timing on to be able to implement as it is. Pretty involved in taking that through the accounting system to add that grant, um, activity into everything. So just, just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just, I would just add one additional comment. We so appreciate Ms. Tally's help. And if our CFO, our new CFO is anything like Ms. Tally, we're going to be thrilled.
She was quite helpful. Thank you, ma'am. All right, counsel, I'm going to give this to you. We need to, what, what we need to do is, is visit, talk, talk amongst ourselves and give direction to our attorney. With regards to the items in the presentation. Or. As we land, whatever, wherever we land, uh, to give our attorney direction to draft the amendment to the IGA so that we can forward that on to the school district.
Well, I first ask if there is consensus on a timeline for an amended IGA for us to consider. It will impact one of the other, uh, agenda items that we have tonight. Um, so I would look to see this IGA amendment for, um, our, um, input. Um. Prior to the 5th of September.
And considerate of the 5th of September?
No, before the 5th of, of September. And for us to decide whether that would have to be in a special meeting, would it require a vote? Or could we have a consensus on the amended IGA, uh, via, uh, an email tally? Is that possible?
Certain, there's not a legal. There's not a legal restriction on doing that. Uh, you can, you can do such a tally.
Well, the question comes back to you. Is this something that could be accomplished within the next week?
Sure. But I mean, I think what respectfully, uh. It would also be worth, I mean, are we, are we writing this in isolation? I mean.
No.
Yeah, I mean, the, the discussion so far has been. We'll draft this if the school district is acceptable. Otherwise, it's, you know, we're, we're writing it only for ourselves.
I'll, I'll lay this out as, as a, a timeline that may impact our decision here is. Uh, we're doing a first reading on an ordinance that could possibly send the question of repealing the tax to the voters on the November ballot. The second, the public hearing on that will be on the 5th of September. Um, if that were to be postponed because we're working on this IGA amendment. Uh, we would then have to consider moving that ballot question to a special election or having a special meeting. After. That could move it to the ballot. What is the timeline for getting it on the ballot?
Nine, six is the drop dead date. So nine, six.
Okay, so it'd be the day after. So, um, the, uh, discussions on amendments to the IGA, if we're looking at. Either pulling that, um, ordinance, voting it down on the 5th. Or postponing it or continuing it to another date. Really depends on how quickly we can get this IGA amendment together, correct?
And how quickly you get a feedback from the school district as to whether the provision is acceptable.
Yeah, with, with Mr. Bates here, I think he would understand that the IGA, um. Amendments needed to be considered sooner rather than later.
And I, what I was hearing was that there's at least some disagreement over the, the implementation schedule.
Yes, and that was my next point. Um, I, my, my recollection of the meeting is that. The dates that Erin has pointed out to us as, um, quarterly report, phase one quarterly reporting and then, uh, phase two monthly reporting, which is my understanding. Um. Would take us into July of 2025. Is there such a way to write the IGA amendment to say, or sooner?
Sure.
Okay, I think that that would absolutely have to be been there. It would not be drag your feet until the 1st of July, uh, in 2025. I have some other thoughts, but I'll be glad to hear counsel's thoughts.
Is there any way to prevent them from dragging their feet just for that?
It would depend on the wording of the IGA amendment.
Well, for, for example, I could draft up a, an IGA amendment, tracking what Aaron just described, including the implementation schedule. That's pretty straightforward project. However, in doing that, I would be drafting up a prose, a proposal that the district has indicated they have some issues with. So it would be not drafting up a, um. Uh, some language on which we have consensus between the parties. But we will know more by September 5th. There's about the receptivity to that language, on the other hand. So. But I'm happy to draft up whatever you guys, correct, make a draft out.
It's just charged by the hour, huh?
I mean, keep in mind that the September 5th meeting is three weeks. Um, three weeks seems to be a pretty reasonable amount of time to. Draft an IGA amendment and give the school board an opportunity to either sign it or not. Um, three weeks is, just to me is, is, is a plenty of time for this discussion. So. I think from a council's perspective, at least mine, um, I think we need to give you direction on exactly what we want to see in that. Um, amended IGA tonight. And then give that three weeks a chance to work its magic, so to speak. Um, and then if we don't have the clarity that we're looking for by September 5th. Then that's why the ordinance to put it to the ballot question is sitting on the agenda as it is. So. Um, I feel pretty strongly that I think the, this as a group can come up with the language that we're looking for. Um, so I, I would like to ask the rest of the council to, let's focus on that language. Um, so you have clear direction.
I'd like to ask a question. Um, on phase one, uh, the second page six of the presentation. It says that the district will be produced, begin producing quarterly reports reflecting the change to grant accounting. For the sales tax for Q1, 2025. Now that would be January. Their Q1.
Is July 1st.
Is July 4th.
Twenty twenty-four.
True.
So that would end.
October.
September 30th. So we would expect, I would expect to see it 45 days probably after. So probably November would be the first time we would see one. Um, am I correct in that?
But this says Q, for Q1, 2025.
Yes, fiscal year 2025, which is right now there in.
And that is in September.
It begins July 1st.
Thank you. Sorry.
And that, that is, that is the only discrepancy we had in that discussion. After explaining what I did a bit ago. If we will have results by in the month of December. That we could put a report out by February 15th. That would allow the time necessary for all the people to be in place and have a sound report. To put out on, by worst case, February 15th. Um. And if, if we're able to do that, uh, then we, we can do that. I mean, Mr. Gear talked about a three-week period. To come to this solution. What I, what I'm graciously asking for is the opportunity for us to get our ducks in a row with a new CFO. And I think the rest of the requirements of us are very doable. We've just got to have a little time. If we bring him in and he's got to be reporting for what. Just a quarter that already started in July. I don't think that's fair to him, and I don't think it'd be good accounting to rush that. Uh, particularly with him coming into a pretty long laundry list. So. If, if we can all agree that we would do that reporting in the first quarter of 2025. That would be wonderful. And that is six months earlier than the current IGA is calling for, for reporting, but we're good with that. Uh, a quarterly report as part of this, uh, an amendment to the IGA is satisfactory to the school district.
So Q2, 2025, which the 2025 references the school year, correct? So Q2 is October through December of 2024.
Yes.
Right? So. Q1, 2025, which is July through September. July is already passed and half of August is already passed. So. That would require them to go back and re-enter and reclassify everything. Um. For July and August, basically, by the time they got it set up. And, and so. I just wanted to say that. Would it be, would it be, and I'm just asking a question. Um, would it be? Acceptable to this council to be Q2, 2025, October through December, 2024, as the first reporting period?
No.
Sorry, Susan. Would it be acceptable? Instead of going backwards to the beginning of July, that Q2, 2025, which is October through December, 2024. Be the first reporting period. For. The IGA.
Well, so if, if Q2. 2025 is October, 2024. If it starts in October as the monthly, I'm fine with that, but I'm not, I'm not going to December.
Can I, can I enter? I'm sorry, I apologize. Can I interject one thing?
Yeah, please.
Leanna, can I ask you one question? Okay, in, in my opinion. If we're going to do this for the whole year. If it was me, I would go back and re-enter everything from the beginning of the year, regardless of when I started personally. Like if it was here, I would go back. Is that your opinion of what should happen also? Because otherwise I don't see how we can get a real accounting of the whole year.
I would also go back and re-record everything, but the timing is what I think we're, we're. Trying to get to is that it will take time to go back and re-enter everything. And so we had discussed in that meeting a 45-day window for reporting. So meaning if a quarter ends on September 30th, you would report with by November 15th. For this first quarter, could that be a longer window? Knowing that there will be reporting made available, but there is the time needed because we're looking at a transition for the district, not only of CFO. But also of reporting requirements, and we need to be able to allow that to happen cleanly without error. And so a longer window on that first quarter would be extremely helpful.
But that first quarter report would contain six months of data.
Right. So, so my recommendation would be.
That would be one way to handle it. We would have information from July through December by February 15th.
That could be one way to ha- handle it, yes.
But, but why would we wait until February 15th? If the, the data was collected for, um, an extended reporting period. Why would we wait to have it reported in February? Why wouldn't we have it reported at the end of the calendar year?
So like February 15th would be considered an acceptable time for reporting of activities through the end of the, the calendar year. Um, because it takes time to close the books, record accruals, um, enter in all of your invoices, turn around reporting, other, um, monthly duties that are. Necessary that normally a 45-day reporting window is acceptable. Um, for example, um, anytime you have debt with a bank, you usually have quarterly reporting that you have to provide to them, and it usually is a 45-day period. To provide those results to them.
Erin, how do we report, um, our, well, for instance, you gave us two reports tonight. One was our, our check register, which is on a monthly basis. And it reflected which month?
It reflected July.
Okay, and it's August.
So a check register is a, um. Like as it goes type of report.
Perfect.
Versus.
And, and Leanna, that, that is what we're looking for. We're, we're not looking for the full accrual method for. The grant or counting exactly. We want to see real time what's happening each month.
Cash flow.
Your, your audit is different. That's going to be full accrual. That's going to be.
Yeah, I think it's just in the, um, idea of having reporting that would eventually tie out completely to our audit. Knowing that, um, school district payroll is a really complicated beast. Because people are, um, they work over a nine-month period. They are paid over a 12-month period. And the fiscal year end happens to have, happen in month 10 of that. So oftentimes districts hold their books open for July and August payrolls to run through, and they accrue those back into the fiscal year ending June 30th. And so that's where if we're wanting to have full. And so that's where if we're wanting to have full accrual accounting tie out. Because I think there would be question if we had sales tax utilization appearing. In our audited financial statements, ours, I'm speaking on behalf of the district, which I should not say that. The district's financial statements would not necessarily agree to the cash basis method that would be reported on a monthly basis. Erin knows what I'm talking about here.
Well, and yes, because we're always two months behind in reporting sales tax, because. A business has until the twentieth of the month following to file tax returns. And so it's the mu- two months after before we get reports on.
My understanding, though, is that we uh. For revenue, but for for the purposes of reporting on the use of the one point zero nine sales tax. We the the end state is that we have a month, an accessible, dynamic, monthly report. Uh, we're giving grace to the district, at least we did in our discussion, that the new CFO is coming on. And that they'll be uploading or implementing new uh accounting software, which, by the way, was uh allegedly paid for with the sales tax. As an innovative program, I don't know that I would consider it innovative. It's just best practice to update your accounting. Uh, software periodically, but we I I acknowledge uh that. There 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 needs to be an onboarding of this new process. But the end result is accessible monthly reports, nothing less.
And I don't care if it's a check register or QuickBooks. It doesn't have to be anything complicated, pardon me.
We have to agree on something. We can't just keep changing the requirement.
I'm not changing anything. I want a monthly record of of counting.
That's that's the end result. That's the end result. Uh, in my opinion, the objective is dynamic monthly reporting. Uh, with the understanding in this first phase that the uh district not. And a- as well, the um charter school will be required. Uh, to provide us a roll up of how the the sales tax is tax is spent. If this first phase is for an extended number of months, not a specific quarter. Then we need to make that clear to the district. We don't need to move the goalpost on that requirement. But on that first phase, if it's, you know, retroactively go back to the first of July. Capture the information through the end of December, and what you're telling me is you couldn't make that available until February? I I I don't buy that. I do agree that going from one July to the end of December is. Probably a more. Um, a a more accommodating method for the first phase. Uh, but reporting it in February is not, and I believe that the monthly reporting should start on the first of January. And that's the wording that I would like to see in the I G A amendment.
So Erin, um.
Please address the council.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, counsel, um. I'm sorry, I have to rega- regather my train of thought now. Um, would it possibly be acceptable then, and there would need to be an understanding written into the I G A? And again, I'm gonna caveat all of this by saying I am not the district, okay? Um, but if a cash basis type method of reporting was presented. And then at the end of the fiscal year, a reconciliation was provided. Showing the difference between the cash basis method and the full accrual method. So that what is reported to the city can tie to the audited financial statements is added into there. Would that be an acceptable methodology?
I would agree with that, yes.
I I would agree as well.
With the understanding that phase two begins on one January twenty twenty five.
So if 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 you're looking for me for guidance, I don't necessarily agree with that. I would do real time reporting for every month except June. And then in June, I would show all of your accruals and changes that you're making for the year. That's how I would want to see it. I'd want to see that report probably within ten to twenty days every month afterwards. And then at the your last month, we would have to make an exception in June. You would have to wait until all the accruals were entered. That would be the the long one, but every other month I would want to see ahead of that. If if that if I was doing it here, that's how I would set it up.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, I know you don't speak for the district.
Right, no, but I but I also have to do this at merit, right? So I am also wearing that hat here, um. It would be at the earliest late August that June's report would be available. And so that would have to be understood.
But that's unique to June.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's for all of the accruals and the reconciliations that have to be done for year end.
Correct, and and primarily, I mean, the bulk of this is payroll, right? I mean, if we look at the utilization of sales tax dollars, it's it's payroll. Um, and that again is where payroll that occurs in July and August are related to the previous fiscal year. And districts hold the books open, record that full accrual once the payrolls are run, so.
So the question then becomes, when as a council, do we want to start seeing the monthly reporting? Understanding June is a unique month in and of itself, so the question we've got to answer is, when do we want to start seeing the monthly reporting? And for what month should it be reporting on as we move forward? Um, I don't, I just don't think we have a clear.
I think Carol was indicating.
January.
We would give them the six months.
Okay.
To get the rest of this calendar year, I'll I'll say that.
Start, because it started.
And then start in January with the the monthly.
Okay, so January.
And then we and we do have to keep that provision in the I G A that that Leanna is talking about, which is.
Right, for June, yes, specific. So then the January report then within would then encompass what, July first through December thirty first?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, okay, because the language here is important.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, the last thing I think any of us want to do is reopen this once we get it close to him. So I just want to make sure the language is specific and clear.
Yep, I agree.
I was kind of hoping that there could be a monthly report, um. Uh, uh, a couple, and if you're going back to June, then it would be more than a couple. But before November, before the election, so that the citizens that, I mean, this. Mr. Bates didn't just start yesterday or last week. This has been going on for four years that citizens have been asking for transparency. Hundreds and hundreds of cora requests roadblocked the entire way or handed over to a lawyer that then runs up the legal fees. I was hoping that we could get two or three months under our belts. Citizens who've been asking for this for years now. Would see, okay, 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 we're getting on the ball and therefore would not vote to take the money, the tail sales tax money back.
Yeah, I think um, one of the things that unfortunately, the work session that we met last week about. And it's unfortunate that you weren't able to attend because there was quite a bit of.
I wasn't invited to attend. I asked to be there.
I do not know these things, so. Um, so one of the things that was discussed is the desire by council to have. Standalone grant style reporting, and that is where, yes, like reporting monthly could begin much sooner. But it would be Excel, basically, like an Excel spreadsheet. And so that's, but then that needs to be okay, like, right, because there's a lot of this delay is. Getting things into a standalone grant style reporting system.
Which apparently the people that negotiated this with you are giving you that time so far. But that's what I was saying earlier, I just something.
Yeah.
If, you know, even if it's, like you said, an Excel spreadsheet, something that shows the community where the money's going.
Yes, I I hear you and I understand what you're saying.
I didn't realize that so much of it went to payroll either, so that's news.
Yeah, it well, it's it's salaries and benefit for educators.
So I was thinking, I don't, I don't need to see the payroll, you know, so.
So um, that that, of course, the district will have to speak to. Like, I just don't, I I don't do their books, right? And so I don't know what it looks like for them to be able to take this information, kick it into Excel, provide the supporting documents, et cetera. And what that looks like in the timing right now of onboarding their CFO.
And and Terry, I mean, we we can pull some of this data now. But what what's not discernible is if something was paid for with the sales tax money. Or not, and that's, that's where we were trying to get with our discussion last week is. You've got to segregate that that source and tell us what it's being used for. Um, you know, I I um, you know, there's, there's still questions in my mind. Uh, the presentation that Mr. Bates and Mr. Witt gave us a few months ago about. Um, paying for an S S E L program to be on boarded for the the district called capturing kids' hearts. Where in the budget uh summary for that school year, that particular program appeared to be paid from another source of money. It's not neither right nor wrong, it's just that I want to know. Did in fact it pay, it did, was that uh training paid for and that onboarding that new program paid for with the sales tax or not? And I can't really tell, so the the discussion center centered on segregating. The sales tax as if it were a grant and then identifying eventually. Uh, on a monthly basis, every month, where that sales tax went and for what use. And I think we all acknowledge the challenge for for payroll. Um, but you know, maybe in another year, payroll won't be the 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 use of the tax. Maybe it'll be something entirely different. I mean, there are categories that were covered in the first or the initial ballot question that said there are five categories. And and it doesn't have to be divided evenly. They could spend a hundred percent on uh technology or innovate innovation. But the payroll right now seemed to be one of the the obstacles that had to be worked on the most closely. But um, the bottom line is segregate that money out, just as if it were a grant. And then account for how each of those tax dollars are spent.
So Erin, when does the city get their, send their next payment to to the district?
It varies every month depending on when we finish our sales tax collection, but it's usually by like the twentieth of the following month.
So it won't be until, they will not get it until September the twentieth, mid September?
I don't know for certain if we've sent this month or not, to get their payments. They may have gotten their payment this week. They may get it next week. So.
Just like, because my thought would be. You know, you could start with the next payment as as ground zero while you're catching up with all this other stuff. Um, I don't know.
So one of the, one of the things further just to say about the segregation and and the grant accounting method. Is because it it accounts not only for the expenses and what the money was used for, but it it's a sources and uses in one place. And so all of the money for the sales tax gets put in that fund and all of the expenses get written out of that fund. And so it's easily seen that these monies paid for this. Instead of being commingled into general fund where. It's, maybe it was and maybe it wasn't, and that it's the same for us, our general fund is, it provides services. And so that that just really isolates both pieces so that it's easy to see.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're on the same page so far as we want to see it set up from a grant accounting perspective. But we're still kind of tossing the the tennis ball back and forth as to the timeline, something like that would would take to set up. Um, and so I'm curious, um, Ms. Ali. Uh, if you were coming on as a new CFO in an accounting system. And you were asked to set up a grant accounting like what we're asking, how long would it take you to do that? Separate from payroll. Let me, let me separate the payroll for a moment.
Yeah, the separate from payroll, we're looking at really only, I think it's six to eight accounts that would need to be created. That would take very little time. Once I was acquainted with the system. Um, I don't know how long it will take this individual to be acquainted with the system, right? And also be diving right into audit preparation. Um, but um, I mean, for me, setting up six to eight account codes, I could do very quickly. Um, it's the, it's the payroll type accounts that would take a, there's, there's over five hundred accounts that would.
Because you have to go recode every single um employee essentially.
Yeah, and it's um, school accounting for payroll for schools, it is extremely um granular. So it's, it's, you have a specific code for your history teacher in high school. And then all of their individual benefits have a separate code, and then your math teacher, and then.
Which the 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 math of time to set that up obviously gets pretty exponential pretty quick.
Correct, and then assigning the individuals to these new codes, and that's where it becomes really cumbersome. And that's where the district is looking to ask for the payroll portion to be brought in in the following fiscal year.
Understood.
Yeah.
Mr. Bates, uh, when is your new CFO scheduled to start again? I know you mentioned that already, but.
He is supposed to come on board on the nineteenth Monday. And uh, like I said, the only thing we ask is that we be given some time for these changes. I mean, we're back to talking about, well, how about a report next month or something? Well, I would ask for the grace to give him time to get set up, because I know we want accurate reporting. I'm certain those of you, the rest of you all do. So if we could have the grace to do our initial reporting in January, we can make this happen.
When is your audit due to C D E?
Well, the the audit is done in September and we have results of it in December.
Okay, but but the audit, the audit work itself is done in September. That's where the hefty, heavy lifting, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And and that is the same case for our audit as well.
I'd like to add on to that, um, so the audit begins in September. Um, it is a back and forth between auditor and auditee that continues through to the issuance of the final report. And the um data pipeline, which is the report that is uploaded to C D E.
Okay.
Um, that happens in December, so really like audit season runs September through December.
The timing is just outstanding. Sorry.
I I hope that you guys know that I'm committed to doing whatever I can to help facilitate a solution here. So that this sales tax that is so important to our children and the school's financial picture can continue. Um, I'm doing my best here to try to to meet the needs here.
You're being put in a difficult position, so I appreciate you being willing to to answer our questions and be so forthcoming. Um, so if we're looking at, again, the one, the one question we still are not answering is the win. Um, so if we're looking at a new CFO onboarding the nineteenth, um, right before audit season starts. Um, understanding that the effort to set up the non-payroll part of this is relatively minor. I'm not saying it's zero, but relatively minor.
It it would be for me, and I assume it would also be for the district's software and the person, yeah.
Do you guys use the same software currently?
We do not.
Okay, okay. Um, so I think for direction for Jeff, we we've got to decide, you know, when do we want to see the monthly kick in? Um, and I don't think we've been clear about that. Jeff, do, would you agree?
May I counsel?
I've heard January twenty twenty five a bunch of times, but I agree you need to be clear about it.
Did you want to speak, Catherine? Sorry. All right, so. I'm trying not to be, all right, so. If I understand this correctly, and so give me, give me a little bit of grace, because I'm an engineer, not an accountant. But I do actually understand the numbers, basically, um, the phase two is what would be the payroll, correct? So the five or six accounts that need to be set up that are not payroll related. Why can't that be done by September or October?
I think it just has to do with getting the person on board, right? And so they start on Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
I I mean, I think that that's.
I mean, I just, I I'm having.
I can't commit what.
But I'm just struggling with pushing out a monthly report to January of next year.
I understand.
I I have no problem with the payroll starting in phase two, which would be whenever we agreed to it. It's just the five accounts or six accounts is where I'm struggling with why I can't get that.
Well, well, Catherine, actually, the discussion we had was that payroll would be included in phase one, but we would give them. Um, an opportunity to do that over a long period of, uh, cover a longer period of time.
Right, the way.
And then, and then in phase two, everything would be reported on a monthly basis. Phase one, everything would be reported that over a longer period of time. Am I, did I miss that, Kelly?
No, okay.
Yeah, and I'm I'm happy to dive into, I mean, I just don't know how nitty gritty you guys want to hear this.
I mean, I guess I don't, I don't have a problem if you take payroll and benefits and lump that. In a one line item between now and next year. I don't have a problem with that. I'd like to just see the other.
Sure.
Accounts start sooner than next year.
Yeah, and I think um, in that, in that meeting that we had last week, it was the discussion of being able to take. Every transaction that's reported upon back to a source document without it in our general ledger or in the district's general ledger. Without it being a journal entry, um, meaning that the source of the transaction originates directly into the correct account. And and so that's where, that's where the time goes into. But if it can be agreed upon that, this is where I do have to go into some small nitty gritty, so just bear with me for a second. Um, I explained to Erin throughout this process that the chart of accounts that is required by C D E. Has a space at the end, it's a four digit space where you can. Has a space at the end. It's a four-digit space where you can put in a specific grant code. And that would be a way that the, that the district and Merit Academy can carve this out for a sales tax is that. Specific four-digit code at the end. As it stands right now, both the district and Merit Academy have payroll accounts that have a four-digit code attached to them. That belong to different grant sources of monies that they receive. There is also many accounts that have four zeros on the end of them right now. That is the pool of expenditures that are not already spoken for from other revenue sources. So that's what we had spoken about, the fact that. Looking at right now, you could pull the general ledger for the district and all of the payroll accounts that are related to educators. That have a four-digit code on the back of them. Are available for usage for sales tax dollars as they stand right now. So that to, right now, if you were to run a report for the district on their payroll accounts that have four, four zeros on the end. Will easily exceed the full sales tax revenues that are received on an annual basis. And so that's what we were, you know, it, it gets very nitty gritty. And this is where the language of the IGA, it's just. It's challenging to get it pinpointed, um, what the expectation is when you're putting it into a legal document. To make sure that all the parties' expectations are correct and met.
And are there enough expenditures? Outside of payroll that could be accounted for in that grant money or in the sales tax money where we don't even have to. Think about payroll right away?
From Merit Academy's perspective, payroll for educators is the bulk of our sales tax utilization. Um, without, I don't have the district's spend exactly memorized, but I believe we follow a similar structure on how our allocations work on sales tax dollars. And so, um, by the end of the year, yes. And so, but on a monthly basis right now, um.
So you're, Leanne, you're saying that you're, the M- Merit Academy staff is paid out of this sales tax money?
Correct, because Merit Academy receives an allocation from, from the district based on our, our headcount.
But not all, not all the sales taxes is. Used for staff at.
Not all of it, no.
Some of it's used in other areas.
At Merit, Merit Academy's portion. A portion of that is used for salaries and benefits of educators, not administrators.
And Terry, that was a, an, an important point for me on last Wednesday is that. The sales tax is applied to educators only, not administrators.
So then is it unreasonable separating payroll again for, to be clear, that. Say October first, we start requiring the monthly reporting on non-payroll. Is, did, what do you guys think about that date? Just based on the information that we.
Okay, but it still doesn't give that opportunity for voters to see that it, how it's gonna look.
Yeah, it would give them, it would give s- something, but I think I get your point, Terry. I'm just thinking to your point, we've got to word this in a way that, that works, so. Um, I'm hesitant to give wide windows, um, because I feel like if we do, we'll get it on the last day. Um, so, um, that's why I'm throwing out October first for grant account reporting on a monthly basis for. And everything not payroll related. And then payroll related will kick in July first, twenty twenty-five encompassing everything.
July first or January first?
Uh, that's a good question. So what do you guys think?
Thinking about that, I'd like to, we've not heard from George or Smith. Do you all have anything to share with us on your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I didn't, oh, sorry. I, I uh, was fine with January, but um, you know, start that. And I, I think there's some assumption. Um, that the voters are gonna need to see something before the election because there's an assumption that that ordinance is gonna be on ballot.
Well, I mean, whether it's an assumption or not, um, I can tell you I'm operating under the idea that it could be. And so if I'm thinking of a voter in the city of Woodland Park voting, having that information would be important.
But the, the bulk of the information, well, you're gonna, you're, you're not gonna get a lot of information.
We're not getting much now, so.
But you will in January. We will.
So, so you're suggesting that October first, January first?
I, I was looking for somebody to throw a, a different date. Right now I've heard January and I think that's, that's sufficient.
Okay.
And are you talking January for monthly reporting?
Yeah, I liked where Carol went, which was, sorry, yeah. I didn't mean to overrun you, Mayor. What were you saying?
That's all right. It's a conversation. I'm, I like having this just be a dialogue because it's important. And we all need to be heard. Um, are you talking about the July, the July through December twenty twenty-four? Information available in January with a reconciliation in June. Right?
Yep.
And then at effective January one twenty-five forward on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
Those would be the two phases.
Effectively, we're getting rid of the quarterly reporting and going to monthly.
After implementation.
After, yeah, after it's implemented and.
And, and then you're expecting to see on the January first, not payroll and the, the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me, I, Smitty, I didn't mean to cut you off. Uh, well, I, what I started to say was, if the first phase is basically for the rest, the remainder or beginning in um. June of this year through December, that reporting would be available. When?
June.
January or February? January. Okay, and then in January, we would begin monthly reporting.
Correct.
For January forward. January forward, correct. With the caveat with June's reconciliation.
Yep.
Okay.
That makes sense. I, would I like to see a more aggressive timeline? Sure, but that makes sense.
And again.
Thank you so much for, for helping us work through this.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Leanne. It's, your, your information was invaluable. Appreciate you.
The only thing that I can say is from what the people of the city has told me. And they want this done. They want to see results immediately. Otherwise, they want to take it to, they want to take it to a vote. That's all I, I spent all day today. Reading the emails, talking on the phone.
As did I.
And, you know, I hear what the city said. And out of, you know, almost eight hours of doing that just today, there is only two people that were against it. And that's a lot of talking on the phone and a lot of emails.
So what date would you like to see, Steve?
Yeah, I'd say, you know, from what I get from, you know, peoples. Hey, if you gotta get June and it comes into August, catch that up, then start it, you know, as soon as possible. Because if it has to go to a vote, they want to see consistency.
Okay.
I, I don't disagree with that because I went through numerous emails today and responded to as many as I could without, without um, prejudice. Uh, but I'm, I'm hoping the dialogue that we're having now represents that. As much as I want to see it today, reporting on how this tax is used on a monthly basis. I understand that that's not going to happen. Not because they're pushing back, the, the district is pushing back, but because. It has not been instituted to, to date and we need to help them make that happen. Uh, the city does uh, monthly reporting on several areas. District eleven does, district forty-nine does. I, I can direct you to the links where they do that. Uh, I know it's possible, but I also know we're, we're starting at ground zero here. And, and I have to, I have to be accepting of that.
If I may add one additional thing, um, our overseeing body, the Colorado Department of Education. Requires quarterly reporting. And so the district and Merit Academy has abided by that regulation. So monthly sales or monthly reporting on anything is a big step. Uh, in, in and of itself to be able to accomplish. So just, just wanted to point that out. Um, that it is more aggressive even than our, our, uh, regulating body.
You, and you have brought that up and Kelly's brought that up. And I don't know if you know, but I've got twenty years of experience in public education as an administrator.
Yeah.
And I know what the CDE reporting is and it's very, very general. They have your certain little accounts.
But it is quarterly.
That's okay. It's, should be all automated unless you guys are using check registers like suggested.
Yeah.
But um, so it's not the same, it's not the same. It's like comparing apples to oranges.
Well, I think it's just the point that quarterly reporting has been the standard. And then, so this move to monthly is a.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
Are you telling me that the board of, the board of directors for the school district does not review financial information on a monthly basis?
I do not know the answer to that.
Can Mr. Bates answer that?
Monthly results of operations at the board level?
I am not on the board.
We do, but we're talking about, are we talking apples and oranges? I, I don't know. I personally. Don't know what is, is done monthly, but of course you have to do that. That's just good business.
Okay, thank you.
Leanne, do you think things are, or I called you Leanne, Leanne, are you, do you think things are organi- organized enough? In the finance department to, that, that's just gonna be an orderly audit that starts, or is it gonna be one of those?
For the district?
Uh huh.
Um, I have one hundred percent confidence in whoever they bring on being able to conduct the audit to the utmost.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not questioning the person that's gonna be doing it. I'm questioning the material that he has to work with.
Yeah, I think, and that's where I think that taking this um, additional layer of reporting here. Why this has to take a little bit of a delay because I have no doubt that the person coming in for the district. Is going to be working around the clock to make sure everything is perfect for the audit. I know that's what I would do.
Thank you. Counsel, do you all feel like we've given the attorney direction that we have a consensus on? To start the, the amendment to the IGA?
I would ask Jeff if he's got enough to go on.
Up high. Press it at the top.
All right, thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, there we go. Yes, I think we have the direction and we'll confer with Erin in.
Could you reiterate it for me right now?
So my, my understanding.
You think?
You gave my recap.
Yes, go ahead.
My, my understanding is that council wishes to give until January first. To get July first through the end of December up to speed. And then starting in January, we would receive those reports plus monthly reports ongoing starting in January of two thousand twenty-five. That would be phase two. So the expectation that we would have the full grant accounting starting January first, two thousand twenty-five.
And the reconciliation in June to accrual.
Yes, and then June, of course, would need a minimum of forty-five days to receive that information.
The only thing I would add to that is we would retain the section of the IGA that does require a physical presentation. By the district to the city via the city council in July. What, I, I don't know if we had a specified date. I can't remember recall.
Took the, I took this as an additive.
Okay, nothing else would change in the IGA?
Anything that exists in the IGA.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have consensus on that, Council? Smitty? Steve, do we have consensus from you?
Another hard time with it, to be honest with you.
As am I.
George?
Yeah, I'm good.
Carol?
I'm good.
Jeff, you mentioned yours. Terry?
I'm on the fence too.
Okay, Catherine? Yeah, I'm, I'm on the fence. I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, we're asking the attorney to give us a draft of an IGA amendment. Do we have consensus that he can capture what we've talked about tonight and then send it back to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Voting on the IGA.
Yeah, absolutely on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. All right. You have your direction, sir? Sirs? Thank you. All right, Council, thank you for that good discussion.
We did have one further question just on procedure moving forward. Once it's drafted, what would the next steps be?
Would you like us to tender it to the district to get a sense of their reaction so that we're able to report on that on September sixth?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, and September, September fifth, September fifth or, or sooner.
Or, yeah, yeah, the, the sooner we can, can all get on the same page, the, the less complicated the September fifth meeting will be.
All right, thank you, Council.
And finally again, uh, um, my thanks to Ms. Tally for putting up with this discussion once again.
Yes, thank.
Thank you.
Your information was invaluable to all of us, right, Mick? Thank you. All right, Council, that takes us on to item eight A, ordinances on initial posting. That is an approval of an ordinance fourteen eighty on initial posting. On ordinance of the city council of the city of Woodland Park submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city, asking whether the one point oh nine percent sales tax. Adopted by city voters in twenty sixteen to benefit the school district ought to be repealed. And set the public hearing for September fifth, twenty twenty-four. This is initial posting. We are setting a public hearing or not.
I make a motion, I'm just gonna jump right in. By all means, Catherine.
Sorry, I had a couple and I, and I, I'm just gonna say this out because the. The ordinance in the packet is not the one that I believe we were actually going with, so. There were the first third and the fifth whereas statements I think are being removed. Should probably correct the three point seven million to reflect three point two million. And then section two, the effective date should be the end of the fiscal school year, at least in my opinion. Of June thirty, twenty twenty-five. So those are the only, the first, third and fifth wheres were all the political wheres, which I thought were.
Unnecessary.
Unnecessary. So those are, that's what.
Mr. Wilson, you, you already made those changes, didn't you?
Yeah, didn't we get the correct version in the packet eventually?
We did not, so we will post, no, we have, um, we will post the correct version. We, we're gonna talk about it tonight.
Yeah, so that's, that's basically what I wanted was. Just make sure, to make sure that that was right, when it's in the package.
And, and to be clear, the change to the July first date is one of those corrections.
So the, the one, Ms. Baldwin, the one that you gave me this evening or yesterday is the same one. That city attorney Wilson gave me. And that's the one that's correct.
Okay.
Matches what you said.
Basically what I just stated, correct?
Yes, and in general, like remove the characterization of various changes as political, rather than just demographic.
Right.
That was the general tenor of the amendment, that's right.
Correct, and then change the, change the, the dollar amount, which is incorrect, because this year's. It's supposed to be around three point two million, not three point seven.
It certainly directed if that changed. I don't recall.
You don't have that, okay. And then the other one.
So will you make that change?
Well, it's not correct, but, and then the actual, and then did you change the effective date to be the end of the fiscal year?
Uh, I tendered the, uh, the ordinance to you three proponents with January first. And it had asked if that date should be changed and I heard nothing.
Okay.
Texted you.
Not to change the date. It was okay.
But I texted you and said I.
Okay, well, okay, okay.
So I think what we should do for the record is I think we should note these changes. So this way, when we do the public notice of the ordinance starting tomorrow, we have the correct changes. Would that be okay, Jeff? So if we want to start with those and see if everyone's in agreement.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to approve. Ordinance number fourteen eighty, series twenty twenty has written, no, sorry. On initial posting, an ordinance of the city council Woodland Park of Colorado submitting a ballot question to electors of the city, asking whether the one point oh nine percent. Sales tax adopted by the city voters in two thousand sixteen to the benefit of the school district ought to be repealed and set the public hearing. For September fifth with the following amendments.
Okay.
Remove all the characterization of the whereas statements. Correct the three point two seven million to reflect the estimated for twenty twenty-four to be three point two million. And change the effective date to be the end of the fiscal school year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I second.
Any discussion, Council? Just a reminder, this is setting the public hearing for this ordinance. Which is where the public can address the council with regards to the ordinance.
I, I, I would only say that the correction to the date is probably the most significant amendment. Uh, the amount of money. Can change on any given day.
Can you repeat that date again? Janu- or June thirtieth?
Janu- or June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Got it.
All right, Suzanne?
Just wanna make sure the attorney's with me on this. Are we good? Okay. So the motion, um, is from Councilmember Nakai, a second by Councilmember Gere with, um, three amendments to fourteen eighty to remove all the characterizations. Correct to the dollar amount, whatever that dollar amount is, and then the effective end of fiscal would be six thirty, twenty-five. Do I have that correct, counsel? Thank you. Would you like me to take the vote, mayor?
I just want to ask one question before of attorneys. Is there any taper effects on this that need to be noticed? Okay, thank you.
Removals fine, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, Suzanne. Case?
No.
I'm sorry. I, I'm so sorry. It's Nakai first. Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gere?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. All right, counsel, that takes us to item H B. Approval of ordinance number fourteen eighty-one, series twenty twenty-four on initial posting and ordinance of the city council of the city of Woodland Park pertaining to firearms on city property and set the public hearing for September fifth, two thousand twenty-four. If you'll recall, we had an, an emergency ordinance for this, this is making permanent. And that would be Jeff Wilson as our presenter.
I'm actually.
Stewards.
Oh, here on out, I, I was.
Stewart's going to present.
All right, so as y'all know, September, Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one uh, permits local governments to enact an ordinance opting out of the state's prohibition of open concealed carry of firearm in local government buildings and property. Um, as you know, the city council adopted emergency ordinance on June twenty-seventh permitting uh, council members, appointed officials, employees and other individuals with a valid concealed carry permit to carry a concealed handgun, city hall, city hall property, youth past cultural center, youth past cultural center property, that includes council chambers unless municipal court is in session. Section seven point seven of the city's charter establishes an emergency ordinance can only be in effect for ninety days, so this is the same ordinance, so it was emergency, it's just putting it on appropriate track for readings before the emergency ordinance expires.
Okay, so I'm gonna be a pain in the butt tonight. Is that okay?
No, but thank you. Go ahead, Catherine.
So the, um, the only thing I had an issue with was the whereas's um, where we recall out why we're doing it for safety, public, for public peace, health and safety. I don't have a problem with the self-defense, I don't have a problem with the permit holding training, and I don't have a problem with the equality and uniformity. I do have a problem with the two that are talking about deterrence and emergency preparedness because it basically is throwing our police department under the bus, so I'd like to remove those. Um, basically, it says that we're, we're deterring people from coming in here when we have police officers that are here for us and could be here in any minute, I believe, and the emergency preparedness in a rural, remote area um, says that we basically don't have them down the street, so those are my only two comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I would say that those would be discussions for the public hearing. Those are substantive changes to this ordinance.
I agree. Thank you, ma'am. All right, anything else, counsel?
Suzanne?
I need a motion in a second, hello?
Could I get a motion, counsel?
Real quick, sorry, um, and my apologies if I'm just being dense, but um, the emergency ordinance centers around concealed carry, um, but that's not the only um, way to carry. Uh, we've had several citizens reach out to us about the lack of open carry language in the ordinance. Um, while this may not be the appropriate time to talk about adding that, maybe the public hearing is the better time to do that. Um, I just wanted to bring that up, that that is something that is missing, um, and um, several citizens have voiced their concern about that, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Oh, I agree, Councilman Gere, that, that is a discussion, but again, I think that would go to the public hearing and, and be prepared to amend this ordinance.
Perfect. If, if you're asking legally, can it be done? Yes, it just, we have to do it in the proper manner. Apologize if that wasn't clear on my part.
Thank you, Councilman Harvey.
Thank you, counsel. Could I get a motion, please?
I make a motion for the approval of ordinance fourteen eighty-one, series twenty twenty-four on initial posting and ordinance of the city council, the city of Woodland Park pertaining to firearms on city property and set the public hearing for September fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Suzanne?
Thank you. Baldwin?
Yes.
Gere?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item H C, approval of ordinance fourteen eighty-two. This is our last initial posting. Uh, fourteen eighty-two, series twenty twenty-four on initial posting amended, amending title thirteen of the municipal code concerning utilities to adopt a new code, section thirteen dot oh eight dot one ten regarding financial relief for unexplained high water meter readings and set the public hearing for September fifth, two thousand twenty-four. There he is, Kip Wiley, for a brief presentation.
Short and sweet, uh, ordinance fourteen eighty-two, uh, replaces resolution two sixty-four. That was done in nineteen ninety-three. If counsel, uh, this counsel, I don't believe, last counsel, uh, heard some of those, uh, dis- or heard a dispute. Um, the new ordinance is gonna be codified, obviously being an ordinance, not the resolution. Uh, it's in your packet, I can answer any questions, but pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you, Kip. Counsel, any questions? Right, then I'll be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second?
Second.
Was that a motion to approve, Carol?
Yes, thank you.
And who was the second?
Smith.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sees?
Gere?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, counsel.
All right, that takes us to nine, which is public hearings. Nine A is approval of a transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license from Good, Thai Good Eats to Just Place. And that's Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Case. This evening, as mayor stated, we do have a transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license. I do need to be clear of which part of the, um, Good Thai Eats is transferring. It's the pool hall, not the restaurant. So the pool hall has a separate liquor license and they would like to transfer it to a new owner and the new owner would be calling the business Just Place and it's located at one oh two to one oh four East Midland Avenue. The applicant is Jessica Nichols and she has a current sales tax number and FEIN number. A petition of needs and desires for this is not applicable because it already exists as a hotel and restaurant license. It's not asking for a new one, just a transfer. The location is eligible for licensing as it is currently. Uh, possession of the property is documented by a lease which would expire on July thirtieth, twenty thirty-four. We require it be for one year and here we have one for ten years. The application was submitted to my office on July fifteenth of this year and the subject property was posted on July thirtieth. The public notice was published on the city's website on August fifth. There were no, um, no, nobody was in disagreement with this. Character of the applicant is not an issue for this hearing. All the FBI, CBI checks, everything have come back clean and all applicable fees have been paid. The fun thing, the fun thing is Jessica's here with us this evening and I'd like to invite her up to the podium so she can tell you what she's planning for this, um, establishment before you guys take your vote.
Thank you. Jessica, if you would just share your name and city of residence, please.
Jessica Nichols, Woodland Park, Colorado. Um, everybody knows me as Cupcake. I've worked at the bar for a year and a half, um. Rick approached, Rick and Danielle approached me about somebody else wanting to buy it from out of town and I basically was like, we can't have that. We've built a great community. It's a great little place for everybody to come hang out, so why not buy a bar? I don't like public speaking either, so here we go.
You did a fine job.
And were there questions?
Told us some of the fun things you were gonna be.
Oh, yeah, um, you know, we'll, we do the veterans breakfast once a month. Every month we'll do that still, um. I'd like to start having pool tournaments, maybe some dart tournaments. Um, my family's gonna be involved. They're all over. I don't know. I'm not gonna point every one of them out. But yeah, I'm gonna have my husband, my kids involved with the business. Just keep it a family affair.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel questions of the applicant?
Yes, I, I noticed some rustling when we, they were saying that your character was fine. There was a whole lot of rustling. Would you like to talk about that?
No, not really. I do have a shirt that says, uh, watch closely, I'm gonna do something stupid. So most of my customers know it's probably gonna happen.
The only thing I'd like to add is thank you for stepping up and keeping a business local.
Thank you.
You bet. Anything else, counsel? All right, then I will open the public hearing for public comment on this item. If there's anyone in the audience would like to address the counsel, please step forward. Anyone online, Sees?
Nobody signed up.
All right, then. Thank you. I'll close that hearing. Or the public portion of the public hearing, or the public comment portion of the public hearings. It's been a long night so far. Counsel, any further questions or discussion? Not, I'd look for a motion, please.
Suzanne, I, I have a question. Um, since this is a transfer, does, is the license effective immediately?
If, as it, um, we can give them a temporary license.
Okay.
It gets sent up to the state of Colorado tonight with the local license approval. We wait for state of Colorado to approve it, but we have the authority to give them a temporary license which is good for ninety days which allows us time to get it back from the state of Colorado.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great question.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I'd look for a motion. Move to approve a transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license from Good Thai Eats to Just Place. Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion? Sees?
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for your patience.
You can go.
The room's gonna clear out now.
It's probably most everybody out of the bar too. I saw Rick. Yeah.
Isn't that something? She's, she's fun.
I'm just waiting for folks to clear. Item, item nine B is approval of ordinance number fourteen seventy-nine, series twenty twenty-four and ordinance of the city council of the city of Woodland Park, Colorado repealing and reenacting chapter nine point four one of the city municipal code to regulate noise within the city. And that's Ms. Stewart.
Yes, it is. Thank you, mayor. Uh, counsel previously directed our office to update the city's current noise ordinance due to, um, a citizen's complaint about a Jake break. So during the course of updating, uh, chapter nine point four one of our code, we realized it really hasn't been updated that much since the seventies and then twenty twenty, two thousand two. Um, and really even utilized in memory. So in particular, the existing ordinance lacked an, an objective way to enforce this. Um, it used just general terms like annoy, et cetera. This gives actual, uh, subjective measurements to do this and our office recommends repealing and replacing the current noise ordinance with the proposed amended one in your packet that is based on best practices, experience of our other municipal clients and modernizes the fifty-plus-year-old version of the code.
Thank you. Any, any questions of staff, counsel?
Are you gonna fire me?
No, I'm not gonna fire you. This is a public hearing, you can do this.
Uh, so the only thing I noticed when I read through it, when I compared it to the old one, was that the hours in the original one were the quiet hours were from nine PM to seven AM. The new one has the quiet hours from ten PM to seven AM. So I'm just suggesting we leave it as is at nine PM to seven AM, but that's all I had.
The only thing I have with that, sometimes you'll have like football games on a good, so ten o'clock.
Those have a, those have an, those have an exclusion.
That's what I want everybody to understand.
Yeah, no, there's an exclusion for that, there's an exclusion for marching band, there's exclusions for that. This is just the normal nine to, like the, the truck, like the garbage truck can't pick up at ten o'clock at night.
Right, and because I just want to emphasize that, you know, to the public that hey, just because the marching band is out there at nine AM and practicing, they're allowed to do that.
Correct.
And they should leave those kids alone.
Correct. One hundred percent agree.
And that's all I wanted.
And that's it, and that's actually specifically in here.
Some people don't read.
Yes.
Pretty sure they caught up on next door about that.
Yeah.
Good.
So that was just the only comment I had was.
And I don't have any objection with, with, with what you're suggesting, Catherine.
Right.
So that, if we get a motion in a second.
Well, I do have a question. How do we measure decibel levels and who does that?
I've gotta meet him.
Well, I'm talking about the code enforcement dude.
So within here, let me, uh, review that part for you really quick. There's a chart in nine A, it gives the maximum allowable noise levels and, uh, DBAs with the time of day allowance. So that'll be on page five of the ordinance. And then the enforcement is, is enforced by I would say the police or the quote.
Well, assuming that this is passed, we will then put a plan in place on how we're going to enforce it.
Is there a, a device that's available to measure the decibel levels? Okay. Besides, okay, I just want to make sure.
Of course you do.
I do. Hey, when you're bumping down the street in the eighties, you know to get one.
Any further question, counsel, before I open the public hearing? Or public comment portion of the public hearing?
And I do have someone signed up for this.
All right, I will open the public comment portion of the public hearing. And Suzanne, if you would please bring those folks to us.
Sure, um, I have someone online that would like to speak, but first Kevin Toby's been waiting extremely patiently for his moment.
Thank you for your patience, Kevin.
Thank you for letting me address you. Um, I will preface this by saying that this probably wouldn't have been a big issue in my life if we didn't have a short-term rental next door to us that continuously violates the noise ordinance. But I don't want to involve the police department every time and pull them away from other important things. But I want to let you know, they do make devices that you can measure that. I actually used this several times during the meeting tonight to see what kind of amplified noise ratings we get. And some of the speakers that spoke actually were in the forty or so decibel range, even though this is amplified. And it's a real concern to me. I actually live about a hundred and fifty feet from a neighbor's deck where the people at the short-term rental have just regular, everyday conversations, but we can hear it in our bedroom at two o'clock in the morning and I can recite verbatim what they were talking about just with a normal conversation. And so I would really ask the city to think about whether we can reduce that. And the World Health Organization actually talks about impacts on sleep and recommends less than thirty decibels for a good sleep. And if you're hearing noise just from an adjacent property and we, we at least have the luxury of being a hundred and fifty feet from the nearest deck where people are outdoors at all hours. If I was a neighbor and had someone literally twenty feet from me, then that noise would be even louder. And I think a lot of people don't realize, even in these low conversations, how that noise travels. And I worked in the outdoor recreation business, had to enforce quiet hours violations. And I can tell you, just talking like this to a person, you know, saying, hey, you guys need to keep the noise down, all the other campers hear that in that area and it really travels and it can be very disturbing to people, so um, I ask, you know, for you guys to just reconsider lowering that fifty decibel threshold. You know, during the daytime, it's only fifty-five and then at nighttime at ten o'clock, you're proposing to reduce it to fifty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next online, we have Joe Fury.
Joe, when you get online, would you just unmute yourself and take off?
Okay, can you hear me?
Are you the, there he is.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Joe Fury, uh, Woodland Park. So, um, mayor and council, I, I read through the, the new, uh, sound ordinance. And, um, I, you know, I like most of it, um. But there's one thing, uh, in the exception paragraphs. There's a paragraph that talks about, um, power generators for hospitals and nursing homes and clinics. Um, what my concern is if there is a power failure. Um, probably a, a bunch of people are gonna fire up generators. You know, either portable or whole house generators. And I thought shouldn't this ordinance, uh, address that situation? You, you know, either as an exception to allow people to generate, to run their generators during a power failure situation. So, you know, I, I think, I think that needs to be added. The, again, the paragraph I, that's already there, only addresses hospitals and health clinics, et cetera. And, uh, just as, uh, just to help you, as I was reading it, uh, section nine dot four, one dot zero six zero. Addresses motor vehicles and there's a typo in the lap, or in the second to the last line. The word grade is misspelled. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I just asked the attorney to look at, uh, let me find it nineteen point four one dot oh four oh exemptions. Item E talks about domestic power equipment. On any commercial, residential, industrial or public premises. So maybe that it would, would be adequate for that. Yes, I believe it would be. Thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience? Yes, Eric?
Again, Eric Lockman, Woodland Park. Um, I, I'm speaking out of memory from a couple of weeks, weeks ago, maybe when I saw this in the pack up for the first time. So one, one part of it also talks about honking horns. And, uh, with modern vehicles, I got out of my vehicle with it running, had keys in my pocket, closed the door. And my horn beeped. It was probably after nine o'clock. And so now I'm subject to up to a thousand dollar fine or one year in prison. Based on the, and so I wasn't actively honking my horn. And it was out of a lapse, but, um, is there a way to, um, kind of create a schedule on what, what, um, that looks like? And I'm wondering what kind of violation would you be in, in order to subject yourself to one year in prison for a noise ordinance?
So if I, Eric, um, it's, it's nine point four one dot zero four zero B where it says if the device is not terminated within fifteen minutes. I'm guessing your alarm did not run for fifteen minutes.
It did not, no.
So I think that covers that and I'm, yeah, so.
Okay, I still have a concern with one year in prison for a noise ordinance. So I'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It, it is probably important to point out that many of our ordinances have a maximum fine and potential prison term, but rarely if ever that maximum is, um, meted out by our, our met, or our judge. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The worst of worst situations. So, um, that is a schedule that applies to all of our code violations.
That's the three strikes, you're out rule. Just kidding. Probably more than that. Thank you, everyone. Anyone else wanna address the council? Thank you. We'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and look to counsel for discussion or a motion.
Yep, um, uh, can we have a, from counsel, can we get, um, some kind of direction on the, the nighttime decibel level? At fifty, what was, what was guiding that?
So the guidance to that, a lot of this came from, um, just I guess best practices that multiple municipalities have used and including what Salida hasn't acted. Uh, I know Nina and Erica have more familiarized themselves with that. And so that's how that came about.
Okay.
I also believe these standards are in the state law noise standards. So it matches those.
And I would add acoustics are challenging. Um, I, I, I live right next to Meadowwood, but it's, I'm probably at least eight hundred yards from the tennis courts. And I can hear conversations down to a word and they usually show up at first light. And something that we've gotten used to, but I, I would like to just make that point that sometimes it's not so much about decibel level. It's about acoustics.
Well, in location, if you're uphill from a noise.
Exactly.
You can always hear it if you're down from a noise.
Yeah, there's nothing we could do about that. But, but we are setting the nighttime decibel level. I, I do like the comment that it's only five decibels quieter for some reason. So it's like.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. The delta's a little narrow. And, any other thoughts?
And what would you recommend?
Um, yeah, I was just thinking forty, forty decibel.
Carol?
Well, I, I thought that's what the, the first speaker had suggested was forty.
Thirty, thirty was WHO.
And this was ten PM to seven AM, um, or is it gonna be nine?
Well, I would, I would, I would like to suggest to have the table changed to nine.
Yeah.
Well, we do have that option as a, a home rule. Municipality.
Yeah, plus, yeah, to the state.
So I, I, I have no expertise in this, but I, I was looking for, um, a compromise of possibly forty for the nine PM to seven AM in residential.
I don't know what that would look like, you know, like in downtown versus a residential. Maybe, maybe we clarify that it is residential. Yeah.
Yeah, commercials.
Lending eight different zonings.
Yeah, commercial sixty.
We would need a motion if that's the change you'd like to make for the nine PM and the.
Well, I, I think we have two, two amendments. Catherine, can you capture those?
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to approve whatever this ordinance number is. Um, fourteen seventy-nine, um, with the modification to table nine A on the source premises. On all of them residential, commercial, industrial, public to be from seven AM to nine PM. And then to change the residential decibel for the evening from this at seven AM to nine PM to be forty.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, I mean Suzanne.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. That takes us to new business, item ten. We have none. And then that takes us to reports. And community events. Well, hold on just a minute. I may have some things to share. From PPACG and I'd like to thank Mayor Protem for joining in the meeting yesterday. Um, as the alternate PPACG. I'm looking for it. C dot update. Highway twenty-four signal improvements are on hold right now, which is at Trout Creek Road. County road twenty-five and at Paradise, Aspen Garden Way. Uh, they are on hold because we're waiting on equipment to deliver. All of the underground work is complete. They're just waiting for the poles, lights and all of that to finish that up. I think they're down there, but they're not over here. So anyway, that's why that's kind of on hold right now and you're not seeing any work. And then the North Highway twenty-four improvements. The Transportation Advisory Committee, the TAC, is looking at funding so they can re-advertise for bids and that's between Kelly's and twenty-four, I believe. On sixty-seven. Um, for bids so that we can award this project. Because last time when they had bids, we didn't have nearly enough funding to accept any of them. So they have a, adjusted that for the ability to re-advertise and select a contractor. Uh, that will be on the September agenda for the PPACG Board of Directors to consider for approval. There was something else. Oh, uh, Ben, our city engineer called me to, or messaged me today. And said they have also added additional funding for that.
It was that project.
That was that, that project. Sorry about that.
Yeah, there's, there's a very high probability we will get it now.
Yes, yes. So that was redundant. Anyway, um, the TAC approved it and we're moving on to the board. That's it. And for events, August fifteenth through September fifth. From Friday, August sixteenth to Saturday, August seventeenth will be the thirty-second annuals. I think it's the thirty-seventh annual. Depends on where you look. Uh, a salute to American Veterans Rally at Memorial Park. The ride is actually the morning of the seventeenth, leaving the high school probably somewhere around nine thirty-ish, according to the chief. They'll be shutting down the highway and there will be a rolling opening of the highway because he's gonna be ri- riding sweep in his patrol car to behind the last bike in that procession. Come and pay tribute to our American heroes and celebrate honor, duty and selflessness through the awesome display of patriotism and camaraderie. Twelve thirty PM in Memorial Park is the ceremony for the rally. Saturday, August seventeenth, starting from the Woodland Park High School, I redundant again. Uh, is the thirty-seventh anniversary of the annual recognition ride. So the rally's the thirty-second. Join or watch thousands of vets and patriots from across the USA, riding on the Colorado POW MIA Memorial Highway. Which is also the Purple Art Highway, Art Highway, yeah. Friday, August sixteenth, six to nine at the Aquatic Center in the evening. Is the back to school bash kickoff the new school year and end the summer with a splash along with games and ice cream. Reach out to the WAC to reserve your spot now. And as always, registration for several sports and arts programming is open through Parks and Recreation. Check out the website for details. And August twenty-fourth, I just wanna share is, um, twenty twenty-four Harvest Center Garden and Greenhouse Tour. If you have not ever done that, it's pretty amazing tour to see the different greenhouses and there are one, two, three, seven, eight properties that are on the tour from nine AM to two PM. In the Woodland Park area. That's all I have. Thank you, Catherine.
Well, you took my thunder with the home and, home garden tour.
Oh, you, well, you wanna do it again?
You're fine. Um, I did, uh, I did enjoy the PPACG meeting. Apparently it was a record meeting. It was done in less than two hours. So that was apparently fun.
Less than an hour.
Or less than an hour.
They usually go two and a half.
Um, but yes, that was, that was fun. And that's all I have, since you took my home tour.
Sorry.
So new legislation that I'm sure you're all gonna be excited about. Effective August the seventh. Motorcycles can slip up in between cars at red lights. They can't weave in and out during the traffic when you're moving, but they can come stop and take off before the cars do from, from the red, red lights, from stop position. Can't go more than fifteen miles an hour. So I thought you guys would be excited about that. Jeff, Jeff is on motorcycle most, some of the time, so look out.
I am excited about that.
I'm not crazy about this.
You won't, you won't catch me.
You're driving.
Doing that.
Admittedly, um, you know, having lived in California for as long as I did, where lane splitting is perfectly legal there. So you can drive right in between. Um, I, I'm glad that the state recognized the safety of motorcyclists on that one. Um, rearing collisions are a problem for motorcyclists, especially at stops. So now admittedly, I, I ride with my wife. Most of the time she rides a trike, so this won't help me. But, uh, be that as it. Um, otherwise, uh, for me, um, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, uh, met yesterday to, um, approve the, uh, Meadowwood Sports Complex Master Plan, um, to be, uh, put forth before council. And I think that's gonna happen at the September fifth meeting. It's a big number, so everyone take a deep breath. Um, otherwise, that's all I have. Do you really wanna know?
I already know. Is it okay to tell the number?
Twenty-eight million.
For everything?
Yeah, for all four phases, um.
Pocket change.
Yeah. There will be a lot of discussions around exactly how we phase that because as Aaron and I have already talked and, and um, you know, the Parks and Rec Board already, we're talking about this yesterday. Um, we think we can get better bang for our buck in reorganizing some of the facial things. So just, yeah.
Carol?
Yeah, uh, Mayor Case, could you remind me again of the date for the memorial service that's, uh, affiliated or the associated with the rally? Is that Saturday or?
It's Saturday, the seventeenth at twelve thirty PM under the gazebo. On, around the park by the, the memorial for Eric Nixon.
I just wanted to, to clarify that.
Yes.
Um, and then, uh, Kelly can add more to this, but, uh, last night we had a, a service or a ceremony or a recognition of, uh, the volunteers in the community at the pavilion. And that was that was certainly, um, appreciated by those of us who volunteer. Um, you know, we may not get a raise, but we got a hot dog and a hamburger last night.
And a chair.
And of that, that chair. But also occurring last night was, um, a ceremony at the, the other pavilion in Memorial Park. And I know, uh, Kristen Higginbotham took several pictures. Uh, I feel like a curmudgeon because I, I kind of asked Kelly to take a proclamation up of our agenda tonight to, um, honor, um, Navy Week. Uh, for those of you who've been in the Navy, you know, there's Fleet Week, but Navy Week in this case was uh, for, uh, a group of, uh, naval personnel who came to the community, not only here uh, in Teller County, but all up and down the front range for, uh, kind of a recruiting effort to really encourage young high school students to enlist in the Navy. Uh, I'm retired army. I have nothing against the Navy. I, I married a marine. I guess that's kind of the Navy. But, um, this particular, this particular group took on a project, uh, after one of the, um, incidents in the group. Uh, drove through Divide and saw a picture of the mayor of Divide on a, a gas station window or something. And was just fascinated by the fact that the mayor of Divide is a dog. He didn't know that last year's mayor was a donkey, but he said, I gotta help any community that has a dog uh, for their mayor. And so a group of constr- a construction battalion from all over the United States. Uh, came and built a pavilion for tea crafts. And they asked for the mayor of Divide to, uh, read a proclamation. Of course, the, the mayor had to ask Kelly to help, help her with that. Uh, but they did, they did their, um, recognition of Divide and, and had a number of, uh, service members in their whites, uh, at our, our park last night. And I, I just wanna shout out to that group. They, they did a great service for the community and it needed to be recognized. Um, and I hope that Kristen's gonna put some photos up on our, our, uh, website.
Yeah, I usually give other organizations the first opportunity to post about their events and then I'll give them a cha- or give myself a chance to reshare. If they don't do that by Monday, you'll see my photos.
Yeah, I, they definitely deserve the recognition. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you for being there. It was, it was a lot of fun. And one of the, one of the folks that was there. A gal that was in, what level is it when they have the little lapel collar on? What rank are they?
Oh, they were all ranks. There were, there were at least three Navy captains.
There were three captains, yes.
Um, and, and every rank down to E two, I believe.
I think that's what she was. But she came up and talked to the ensign Lamar and asked him if he would like her to sing the National Anthem. And he says, well, can you sing it well? And she said, oh, yes, I sing it a lot at events. And so she did. And it was beautiful.
It, it was.
It was beautiful.
It was goosebumps.
Yeah, it was. So it was awesome. There were about thirty or forty of them in their dress whites out there. It was it was wonderful.
Oh, man.
Thanks for mentioning that, Carol.
Yeah. Yeah, that's same here. It's pretty hard to miss a whole bunch of people in their dress whites. But yeah, I was wondering the same thing is what we'll, so.
All right, George?
Yeah, um, first off, thank you to the city and staff for the volunteer appreciation night. That was fantastic. It was great to see everybody. And see all the different groups and volunteers come together. DDA update, uh, I'll just do part of it, Aaron. I think there's a lot more in the work session that you're probably going to talk about, but. Um, for the folks, Atava is, you know, as we did the ordinance or whatever, we passed the uh.
Subdivision Development Agreement.
There you go. Um, as we pass that, so. I believe dirt is starting to move. Yeah, and um I think we heard from Rick that. Construction's going to start in September, so. This is going to be pretty exciting for that downtown area. And by the way, just everybody should know the construction can go till ten o'clock at night. Regardless of what our noise ordinance uh says, so.
The noise ordinance allows for a, a temporary use permit, so.
So there's that. Um, other than that, afterwards, we had a great work session to talk about. The reimagining uh Berkshire Park. And that was pretty cool. Um, some really good input and um look, I'll let you do the rest since it's going to rest with Cindy.
We did, uh, we had a lot of um. Different groups there. We had the Prab group there. We had several members of city staff. I wanted to make sure as we had. Our engineer, I think we had a planning director, Kip was able to get briefed on it after. And uh we had historical preservation committee and then of course Prab was there. And I think we're going to have Prab take the lead on that because it is a city park. So we will do the proper community engagement. We'll make sure. I don't, I don't want anyone out there thinking that we're just going to go ahead and do something. We are going to do a lot of community engagement. Make sure we get the right. Right fit for that space.
Yep.
One of the things that we're going to do and, and it was. Uh, I thought was outstanding was um there'll be a recognition of a memorial. Uh, place somewhere within the project to acknowledge and memorialize Bert Bergstrom. Who was formidable in our community in many different ways, some of them not legal and some of them kinda. But he was uh. Yes, he was. He owned the Uden, the original owner of the Uden and many other things. So.
He was.
That was in his memory and so they're going to honor him with some sort of memorial there. Steve?
Yeah.
Your turn.
Okay, well, actually a couple of things. First off is uh just a reminder, Aaron, to, you know, contact the head of the uh Veterans Bikers. Uh, the additional parking over at the Masonic Lodge for the veterans riders. Okay, that could be Friday and Saturday.
Thank you. They, they have been contacted.
Pardon?
Yeah, they were notified.
Okay, good.
We did speak with, thank you very much.
I'm sure that they got that extra space that they needed.
They, they did need it.
Yeah. And the uh second thing is a reminder to all those parents out there. And kids that Saturday at nine o'clock at Meadowwood, we're going to have two sessions for flag football. And uh I'll be giving a clinic on the difference. You know, positions for flag football and also going over and covering the rules for flag football. So just a reminder to those volunteer coaches. To, you know, make sure that they're there because it is very important, especially if you're a first time coach. Aaron.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. City Attorney?
Hi, yes, I just have a, a brief statement. I really appreciate being here, but in addition to that, I'm actually proud to be one of the city attorneys at Woodland Park. I have over ten years of experience practicing law. And the majority of that has been not only in litigation, but also advising many different municipalities. I want to say that my experience here with both council, staff, city manager, clerk, everybody, I'll finish my Oscar speech now. But um, you know, has been great. You are compassionate, knowledgeable, and the community involvement here is, is pretty. Pretty um impressive, quite frankly. So I look forward to continuing to do it and, and thank you all for this.
We're glad to have you.
I know, it got like kind of Grammy and Oscar acceptance and I was like. But yes, no, I do mean it though. It, it's really nice to be here.
Thank you.
Jeff and Nina do a great job keeping me in line.
Jeff, do you have anything for us? Aaron?
All right, um, I do want to thank everyone for their patience as we do a lot of these road construction projects over the summer. Um, your tax dollars are hard at work and you can see that all over the city. We will definitely look into this trash issue on Lake. That, that is a huge concern that I'm hearing for the first time right now. So we will take action next week. I can promise you that. Um, I also wanted to say. Oh, it was the Berkshire Park. That was all I have. Thank you. Oh, no, I did have one more thing. Um, for the ride itself, my understanding is that westbound traffic will be closed from ten to ten twenty on Highway twenty-four. I don't believe we're doing the rolling closure this year because Lake is closed and Chief can correct me if that's wrong, but I believe that that is the case. The westbound traffic will be closed from ten to ten twenty.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? All right. With that, any, we are adjourned, counsel. Thank you for everything.